The time is now 7:00 PM. We will now reconvene back into open session. I want to, uh...
Hello, Dar. I'm Jackson.
I want to welcome everyone for joining us here tonight. Kind of a little bit of a happy and a sad occasion at the same time. But with that being said, we want to welcome everybody. You can see that we all have our board members here. We have Mr. Carney, we have Mr. Sitten, uh, we have Ms. Morrison, we have Dr. Fagan, we have Ms. Conrad, and we have Ms. Dixon up here. I would ask if you all would please now stand while we get ready to do our pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we have the Kingwood Navy ROTC as they come.
Forward. Art. Color. All. Right. Base. Read that. Color.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On this Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to be Texas, one state under God, one universal.
Order. Color. Ready? Cut. Left and right. Base. Forward. Art. Close. Colors. Ready? Two. Left and right. Base. Forward. Art.
Pass that to you and please remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Dr. Fagan, do we have any accommodations, recognitions?
We absolutely do. Quality education is personal and focused on meeting each student's needs. Our work-based learning program provides students with job coaching so that they can learn skills to become employed in the community. This month's Inspiring Moments video introduces us to students who are maximizing their potential in the workplace, along with business partners who contribute to their success and make this possible.
We were living in California at the time, and I was volunteering at the school, bringing Lindsay with me. And it was actually the principal of that school that suggested that I have Lindsay evaluated. They noticed some delays in Lindsay. They put me in touch with a group of doctors, and we went through the whole battery of tests. After that was done, they came back and they basically said, "Your daughter is mentally retarded, and she will never work, she will never live independently, she will never do those things that you would ever expect." And the thing that I remember them saying to me most was, is if I was lucky, if I was lucky, maybe she would be able to wash dishes somewhere. So my daughter Lindsay is working at a local McDonald's here in Kingwood. Anybody who goes into the McDonald's at the time she's working probably has had a chance to see her, because she's very social. She says hello to everybody and engages with everybody that comes into the restaurant.
Oh.
At UMBLE ISD, we have our work-based learning program. It starts in the ninth grade with a progression of classes, which start with career exploration, campus work-based learning, and then community work-based learning, which is also known as our job sites, and then internships.
So with Lindsay, when we first hired her, again, she was one-on-one with crew trainer, learned the lobby. She has done a fantastic job. Our guests love her. Her hospitality is at the highest level.
A very important part of our program is our job coaches. Our job coaches provide support for our students while out in their community classroom.
Well, I am the food prep. I prepare the food. I bag the brownies, I make the lemonade, I also make the fruit cups.
Richard's been a great addition to our team. He came through our community partnership with UMBLE ISD, and specifically the Mosaic Program that we've been working with. The job coaching they receive is huge. Richard's work, specifically, they worked with him on getting a real set pattern and how to do specific things. They made some little job aids for him that worked and resonated for him very well. They also worked on like those soft skills about eye contact with us, and welcoming everybody, and becoming more of an interaction with us. And a huge improvement from day one to where he is now. It's been a great journey to watch.
The ultimate goal for our students is to gain independence and also to be employed in their community.
So Lindsay lives in Stony Glen, which is a residential facility here in Kingwood.
Um, I like being independent. There, um, I don't need, I have some stuff I need help with, but I'm learning.
Our work-based learning program would not be possible without our business partners. They provide and give our students such opportunities by providing that community classroom.
At Howard School, I went to a program called Work-Based Learning. I always wanted to work at a body shop, and I love building things and disassembling things. And a little bit destroying things also.
This goes back a little ways, but with work-based learning and then the internship that resulted in that, Chris was able to come in and actually look at certain tasks and decide what areas we thought he would excel in.
When I started at nineteen, I was nineteen years old. I was very nervous, to be honest. Okay, I didn't know how the people are going to like me at all. So I did my work. I worked hard. Now everybody started to realize that, so they treated me a little bit better and better. Now we're amigos.
One of the most delightful things about our relationship and having Chris here is not only is his work ethic amazing, he has a wonderful attitude, he has the best sense of humor, and he has never shown up late.
Well, here at Sullivan's, my dream, my dream would be becoming a painter.
He was able to come into the refinish department, and he really latched on to the refinish side, the prepping, priming, taping, and it's very detail-oriented.
This building here, this would be my paint area. So I get to do trim, the inside underneath the hood, everything. I stand there, rust off, start painting that, put a clear coat, and sometimes needed clear coat.
Everybody here is delighted that Chris is here. He's become a great part of our family, and I would recommend any small business or large business that has internship, job site-based, work-based learning opportunities, please come onboard and partner with us at UMBLE ISD. It is a decision you'll never regret.
I don't think they realize, they really don't. I don't think the staff and the managers and the employers and the companies realize they're not just giving to that employee. They're giving to families, to all of us. They're giving opportunities, they're giving, they're giving hope. They're, those families who are just coming up, who still have small children, who are still struggling to figure out what's going to be the right place and the right fit for their child, when they can look up and see what Lindsay has done, or what other kids in the community have done, it gives them hope.
I feel, I feel great. I feel happy, I can do my own things, I don't have to rely on my mom all the time. So, I like it.
I never, I never actually thought I would get a job here. I felt like, I felt like a mess-up at times. Like, I'm bound to fail or something, but my teachers proved me wrong. And I thank them for that.
It is my pleasure to recognize some of the stars of tonight's video who are in the audience. Please stand when I call your name. Richard Cabrera and his job coach, Maria Rodriguez. Chris DeLeon, his mother, Miriam Cruz. Lindsay Sticklitz and her mother, Lisa Dempsey.
Means I managed to do something. Means I'm not, that means I'm not a mess-up. That I could do more than I can think of, once I put my heart and mind to it.
It was good, Jonathan, thank you. We would watch it again, we liked it, a lot. Laura Casey, owner of McDonald's in Kingwood. Dwayne Johnston, owner Chick-fil-A Fall Creek. Danny Sullivan, owner of Sullivan's Advanced Paint and Body. And Jerrilyn Sullivan, our transition coordinator. We are so proud of this program in our school district, and it is just one more example of things that you just can't measure, you know, it's Star Week, you know? Things you just can't measure that are so much more important, so much more important than anything on a test. UMBLE ISD is a special place, and it's a special place because you folks from Chick-fil-A and from McDonald's and from Sullivan's, you invest back in our school district, and you are our true partners in every sense of the word in helping us raise children in a community that values every single one of them and their futures. And I could not be prouder to serve as superintendent here. And Jerrilyn, the work that you all do and the job coaches, it's incredible. So congratulations to all of you. And Jerrilyn is always looking for more business partners. So tell all your friends and neighbors and families to watch this video. Jonathan will play it twice, and we'll, and it was a wonderful job on the video. So thank you to the Public Communications Department. You know, sort of, they're the, they're the sort of heroes behind the videos. We talk about what's in the video, but they do a fabulous job of telling a story, so thanks to you all also. All right. Woo, that was for an Emmy or something. All right, right? Next, Jerry Monbaron is going to present our superstaffers.
UMBLE ISD employees go above and beyond each day to meet the needs of our students, and we want to recognize these employees for their important work in keeping UMBLE ISD great. Each month, campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer for their outstanding work in advancing student achievement. A drawing is held, and three honorees receive additional recognition at a school board meeting, including a gift card, thanks to an award sponsor. And this month's superstaffer's award sponsor is Gulf Coast Educators Federal Credit Union. And joining us from Gulf Coast is Julia Arseneau. Thank you, Julia. So being honored this month as the elementary superstaffer is Sharon Diaz from Pine Forest Elementary. Sharon, come on up. Joining Sharon is the principal of Pine Forest, Sloane Simmons. And while they're coming up here, let me read a little bit about Sharon. Sharon is a valuable asset to our campus. She serves as our campus IT, but she is so much more. She builds relationships with our staff and is a go-to for advice and problem-solving. She is always willing to go the extra mile for whoever and whatever needs to be done. Sharon provides training to keep our staff up to date on technology and provides valuable learning experiences for our children. Sharon is quick to respond and troubleshoot any technology situation. She is a joy to work with. Thank you, Sharon, for all that you do to make Pine Forest a great place to learn. Being honored as a secondary superstaffer tonight is Lacretia Jones from Ross Sterling Middle School. And the woo in the background was D'Amico Barley, the principal. So come on up, Mr. Barley. Here's what they said about Mrs. Jones. "She is an awesome algebra teacher. She works hard to ensure that she is meeting the needs of all of her students regardless of their academic ability levels, and is always more than happy to help any student outside of the school day. She has Saturday camps for her algebra students to ensure they are understanding the content. And she also piloted a girls' club called Glow Girls, designed to empower young ladies to be confident, goal-oriented, and positive. She helped 100% of her students pass the Algebra EOC last year, which was a first for Ross Sterling Middle School." Being honored tonight as our support superstaffer is Lori Dabs, HR coordinator. Joining her up front is Kelly Gabrisch, the director, and then also Rick Gardner, Associate Superintendent of HR. And then also a special guest we have with us tonight is Lori's mom, who's also here. Lori's genuine commitment, not only to her HR department, but to the district's mission as well, continues to make a positive impact for our students through her selfless acts of support and volunteering. Her dedication and service is demonstrated by years of volunteering, countless hours using her creative and collaborative skills to assist with the Education Foundation and the UMBLE ISD Livestock Show, just to name a few. She is the first one to jump in and help anywhere she is needed in our HR department. In addition, she is the manager for our new administration building and has spent many evenings and weekends to make sure all departments have what they need and are kept informed. Lori always provides quality service to our employees and community and is a true example of a devoted and loyal UMBLE ISD employee. Congratulations to all of our superstaffers tonight.
And if we could, I would like to invite the folks who were in the video to come forward, and we'd love to have a picture together with all of you. So the business owners, the students, the moms, you're all welcome to come up forward. We'd love to have a picture together.
All right, thank you, Dr. Fagan. Next, we'll have our public comments, questions and comments by patrons and employees of the district regarding any agenda items or any matters. Seems like we only have one sheet, and if I butcher this, forgive me, but it's going to be, I'm going to say, Ecomet Burley. Is that?
Yes, sir.
Right there? Okay, and I'm gonna go ahead and finish it up here. You are the director for the Center for Safe and Secure Schools at the Harris County Department of Education, I believe.
Yes, sir.
All right, sir. The mic is yours.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and I'm very glad to be here to President Cunningham, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Fagan. I am excited to be here tonight with some good news. My name is Ecomet Burley, Director for the Center for Safe and Secure Schools with Harris County Department of Education. I'm here tonight on behalf of our department to recognize UMBLE ISD's longstanding commitment and partnership with the Center for Safe and Secure Schools. We were created in 1999 at the request of superintendents in this area to support your efforts as a district to have safe and secure learning environments where teachers could teach and students could learn. So tonight, I want to recognize that longstanding partnership by presenting you with some nice recognition plaques that memorialize your membership in the center since its inception in 1999. And those plaques are for your membership for the 2017, 2018, and 2018 and 2019 school years. It's our way of saying that we value this partnership that we have with you and appreciate the opportunity to say so publicly. Additionally, I'd like to thank Chief Solomon Cook and Mr. Lupe Garza, your Assistant Director of Emergency Management, for their efforts to make sure you have safe learning environments that are prepared for any type of emergency. I want you to know that you have engaged us as a third party evaluator of your schools. We come in and do the mandatory Chapter 37 safety audits, and we want you to know we take that responsibility seriously, and we value your partnership. So with that being said, I'd like to present these plaques to you, President Cunningham, and our superintendent. So just commemorating our partnership and thank you for your commitment to safe and secure schools. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Burley. We do appreciate that. Okay, next, we will have our comments by individual board members, and I will start with Ms. Lamond Dixon. My left, your right.
Okay, well, first of all, I would like to say thank you to all of our faculty, staff, district police officers, the leadership team, and Dr. Fagan for keeping our students safe this past Tuesday. I'm saying that as a board member and as a parent. I was a little nervous about my own baby being stuck in school, but I was also very confident that she was safe and she felt that way as well. So kudos for all of the effort that it took to make that happen. I really appreciate that. The next item is kind of interesting. I just wanted to share this real quick, because it's a kudos to UMBLE ISD. My daughter, my oldest child, graduated from Howard University in DC this past weekend with her BA in Film and Television Production. Her name is Cassidy. She graduated magna cum laude, Annenberg Honors. She's going to be working for Apple. All of that is wonderful, and of course, I'm extremely proud of her. But I'm sharing with you, sharing this with you tonight, because although she's a bright, driven, focused kid, she attributes her success to being a product of UMBLE ISD, and more specifically, being a product of the UMBLE High School's IB program. She truly feels that being a part of that program prepared her the way she needed to be prepared to be successful in college. And one very specific thing, to be an honors graduate, you have to do a thesis, which takes, I don't know, like about two years to complete. And in IB program, you have an extended essay that you have to complete your senior year. Same thing. She felt like, wow, I've kind of already done this. I did it in high school. So she felt very confident going through her college years, and I just wanted to share that. I know it's partially a little brag, I'm sure, but just to say kudos to UMBLE ISD and UMBLE High School. And last, Mr. Carney. I have really enjoyed serving alongside you for the past two years. I want to thank you for your service to the district, and please know that I consider you not just a colleague, but a friend, and you will definitely be missed. Congratulations to the superstaffers. Thank you to the Harris County Department of Education, Jerrilyn Sullivan, Transition Coordinator, and everyone that was just featured. What a wonderful opportunity, program. It feels good to be a part of something like that, even though I feel somewhat removed, but I just would like to embrace that. It was just a wonderful video. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Ms. Conrad.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Ms. Dixon covered it all.
Sorry.
That's okay. But I do want to just add to that a bit and congratulate our students in your, in your working relationship, partnership with the community business. Your success there is just amazing, and like they said in the video, you're giving hope to students who will go down the same path as you in the future. And so we really thank you for our community partnerships, and Jerrilyn for just fostering those relationships and always seeking more opportunities for our students. We really appreciate that. I do also want to, I guess we won't meet again before graduation, so perhaps we should congratulate everyone who will be graduating in the class of 2019, beginning with our first group last night at Quest. And it's always a wonderful time of year to celebrate, and so we look forward to getting to shake hands and meet families and be a part of that celebration. I did also want to thank everyone for their response to our weather situations, not only Tuesday, but the Friday before, and that includes everyone who responded to push water out, or blow a drain open, or make calls, send emails, drive buses through water, whatever it took, staying overnight in many instances as well. I just, just so appreciative for the lengths that everyone goes to, to keep our students safe. And so we appreciate it, and we appreciate your leadership through that, especially losing one of our own, our counseling behavioral services, and their response to our, our family that's hurting, and just, my heart goes out to our gross family and all of the students that are, continue to be touched for the months that come. And I just appreciate how you've responded to their needs daily as that changes. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Ms. Morrison.
Well, just a huge thank you to our business partners. Thank you so much for letting our students intern with you and build those, those life skills of working. And I must say, you three that we got to meet tonight, you are awesome. You rock. Now I know, when I go to Mr. Sullivan's to fix the dings, okay, I know. And then now I know, the young lady who I see at McDonald's, okay, all right. And over at Chick-fil-A, okay. Now I can, I've got a face and a name and everything. Now I can, I've got a face and a name and everything, so I'll be seeing you again. But congratulations. And thank you guys so much for working with our students. And Jerilyn, one awesome job. One awesome job. Ditto to everything Mrs. Conrad and Mrs. Dixon said. It's graduation time. We had a beautiful graduation ceremony last night, and we're about to have five more. And in one day, one day. Kudos to the staff members that stayed at the schools to stay with our children, and we had little people and we had big people. And thank you, Dr. Fagan, and all your staff members for keeping us in the loop and making sure that we knew that our kiddos were safe, and getting their parents there, and helping guide it, because it was a very stressful situation, and we've had an abundance of those situations. And hopefully, maybe in the near, in our future now, maybe it'll slow down on us. So just a huge, huge thank you. Kudos to the great staffers. I actually remember one at Pine Forest. She was my technology person. So, Ms. Diaz, very, very proud of you and everybody. And, you know, you can't say enough, Mr. Carney, you've been a lot of fun to work with, and you very definitely better stay around and stay in view. And I can't thank you enough for your service to this community, and I hope to see you again. So, and I'll see you all the time, so I know that. But anyway, kudos, because, I mean, it's been a pleasure, a sheer pleasure, working with you. And Harris County Department of Ed, thank you, thank you, thank you for helping us and helping to guide us, so.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Mr. Sitten.
I tell you, this may be the first time that everybody up here at this table's talking more than me. But I'm just getting started, so that ain't gonna happen.
And I forgot our baseball teams.
I'll tell you what, yeah, I've got a lot of people to thank. We're gonna start with Jerilyn Sullivan. You're incredible. Words cannot express what you've done in this school district for these people, and in your new position, you're able to affect so many more lives. Laura Casey, you've been a partner of our school district for many, many years. I know you went through a hard time with Harvey, and you're back up and running. The place looks fantastic. Thank you for your partnership. Dwayne, I know you didn't bring your better half, but that's okay. You two have been a huge, huge partner for our school district for many, many years. And then there's Big Dan the Body Man in between y'all. I tell you what, we can't thank partners like, yeah, can't thank partners like you guys enough. I mean, y'all are fantastic, and anyone that would like to become a community partner, see Jerilyn. I mean, they rock. And to all of our workers and our coaches, man, awesome. Great video. And Mom, I tell you what, I almost blubbered up here listening to you talk. That was, that was a great testament.
He didn't do my job.
That's okay, I did.
Great testament. Great testament. So, let's see, where am I at now? There's other people here in the room I want to, I want to recognize. I see Christy and Janet Ward, good friends of mine, and also employees of the district here to bless us with their presence. Thank y'all for being here. Norman Fundaberg, Mayor of Pro Tem, City of UMBLE. We appreciate you always being here, and your knowledge of the community and your partnership with the City of UMBLE. We greatly appreciate that. Let's see, I see Ms. Draven and Mr. Johnson over here. They must have heard we're approving contracts tonight. So, glad y'all are, glad y'all are here. We don't know if you'll be back next month or not, but we'll see. So, thanks for being here. Baseball, baseball. We had lots of playoffs this week, lots of rain, people running everywhere, and we played them all right here in UMBLE ISD with our new stadium. And some great, great baseball games were being played. We have Atascocita and Kingwood still in it. Kingwood Park went down to the wire, lost the coin flip and had to drive to Bryan to play Game Three and got beat. And Summer Creek came down to the wire, Game Three, and got beat. So, I mean, it was just a tremendous effort by everyone, and, you know, kudos to all the success that we've had in athletics and extracurricular activities and academics throughout the school year. I'm losing the right side of the board here. I don't know if it's, I don't know if I'm running everybody off or what, but Mr. Lopez, we gave him his farewell last, last month, and Mr. Carney, you will be missed. Granted, it wasn't a long period of time that we were together, but you brought a lot to the board, and we appreciate all your service, and hopefully, you and your wife will stay involved, and we'll see you again one day. And last but not least, I think in the back row, we see Mr. Robert Scarfo and Ms. Lori Toomey, our two newest board members that will be brought on board in June. Thank you guys for being here, and y'all ran a good race, and congratulations. And we look forward to welcoming y'all as part of the Team of Eight here very soon. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Sitten. And I will go ahead and go, I just want to dittle with everybody else that said. You, Dr. Fagan, and your team with the weather issues that we faced, you guys did a remarkable job. It is sad when you lose a family member, so of course, my heart goes out to that family. I wanted to also, Jerilyn, just thank you for all the things that you're doing. Thank the business partners, I think it's Ms. Casey, is she still, yeah, she's right there. Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Johnson, thank you, and to our students, just thank you all guys too, you know, doing a fantastic job. I think it was last, whatever it was, we had the Top Ten Dinner. That was fun. I'm looking forward to this Thursday, Top Ten Breakfast with K-Park. I think Monday, which was yesterday, oh, these weeks are going so fast. This week is National Police Week, and I wanted to thank the chief for your part on Monday. You got up and spoke. I believe the City of UMBLE, the mayor was up there. Mr. Fundaberg, I see you there, you were there. Also, our UMBLE Police Chief, Mr. Dawes was there. Great, great opportunity, great time, spending that time. And looking forward to graduation. So we just had one yesterday, and May is a busy time of the month. And then, of course, to my board member here, to my right, your left, Mr. Carney, it's been a pleasure serving with you, getting to know you and your family, and I know things are just gonna go up, you know. I know you're gonna still be involved in the district, so I still look forward to hearing from you, working with you, and wish you all the best. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you for the last word.
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of stuff going on, I don't really know where to begin on this one. As a Kingwood resident, I can't say enough, thank you for all the hard work and effort that a lot of folks in here have done over the last week, to keep us safe, keep our kids safe, keep us informed about what's going on. It's kind of challenging times right now, trying to figure out, you know, what's the next event that's gonna keep us all up at night? But, you know, as a board member, as a parent, you know, I've got nothing but confidence that the people in this room and this team, this leadership team, you know, have the right skills and the right motivations to keep everybody safe, and are doing a great job at that. So thank you, everybody. Now we have people at K-Park, Elm Grove, Woodland Hills, Hidden Hollow, Kingwood Middle, Foster Elementary, I'm sure there's a few others unforgiving. Doesn't surprise me that our staff were above and beyond to make sure our kids were safe and well taken care of, but I can't say thank you enough, so thank you, really, really appreciate that. Also, I want to congratulate Quest students in the graduation last night. That's one of the, one of the things I look forward to as part of this job, is to see the excitement on the kids' faces, you know, all the hard work and all the effort they put in. Just really, really enjoy that, so looking forward to the next one in a couple of weeks. Also, I want to say congratulations as well to all of our athletic teams as well. There's not enough time to sit up here and go through all the accolades that our district is earning, but if you just load up Twitter and you scroll through some of the feeds from the different teams, it's really amazing. It's really exciting times. Just Summer Creek, I think they had a post out this week that, you know, maybe 15 different things of all the really, really amazing accomplishments that they've had, so really awesome to see. Look forward to that continuing. Obviously, you know, this isn't turning out for me the way that I expected it would or hoped that it would. That said, it's been a fantastic year and a half. You know, I jumped into this just wanting to help out and do what I can to steer us, you know, in the right direction, and I've just been blown away by everybody in terms of the quality of people we have in this district, the quality of our teachers, the quality of our leadership, the quality of our board members, the motivations that everyone has. Everyone is unified and putting our kids first, and, you know, I trust that that's gonna continue whether I'm here or not, but I want to say thank you to my fellow board members for giving me the opportunity. I literally was not really known by anybody on this board, you know, when they made the selection to appoint me to this spot, so I can't thank you enough for this opportunity. It was everything I expected it would be and more, and like it or not, I'll have a kid here for the next 18 years, so to be truthful. It's not the end of it, so I'll be around, we'll see what the future holds. I also want to thank my family as well. You know, doing something like this really requires a lot of sacrifice, and so as we're all focused on making decisions for the 40-something thousand students we all have up here, sometimes that causes us to have to miss things for our own family and our kids and whatnot. So thank you to my family for supporting me in this, and, you know, making this happen for me, it's something that I wanted to give back, so thank you. Look forward to being more involved at home. I think Mr. DeLeon, I think, said in the video that he likes breaking things. I think it's kind of the phase I'm in right now with my 10-month hold at home, just pulling things down and tearing things up. So, I'll have my work cut out for me, there's no shortage of things to do, but we'll definitely miss the opportunity to serve on the board, and wish Mr. Scarfo and Ms. Toomey all the best of luck. You know, please continue all the good work that the board has done. Same thing with my fellow board members, you know, please continue to put our kids first, and I trust that you'll make the right decisions going forward. So thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Well, Colin, we're not quite through, so, you know, for a person with a servant heart, we're gonna ask you, if you would, to step down to the center, and all the board members with y'all, step down too, because this is a tradition that we always do, and I have something here. Y'all just work with me for a moment.
You gonna be able to get up?
Yeah, boy, getting all up in here, man.
So can you serve? Take your small.
Team of Eight, I'm feeling it for Chief too. All of us, Colin, y'all can say you've got this servant heart, we appreciate it. We know you're not stepping out, you'll still be around. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Study. I'm a doctor, I'll, it will hurt.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Yeah, don't drop it, man, that thing just kind of hit me too.
Like I say, it'll hurt.
I tell you. All right, we're gonna move right along, we're gonna move into our update from our Board Association of Committees. Did I miss something?
Dr. Fagan.
Yeah, Dr. Fagan, I forgot about that. Dr. Fagan.
President, kind of gave me thought I'd spoken enough tonight already.
No, no, somebody's just trying to get up out of here, so I'm guilty.
All right, all right. I'll be, I'll be quick. I want to, I do want to say thank you to Jerilyn and all of the folks who contribute to that program. You know, some of us moved into a new building, and the very best part of moving into a new building is that we have some students who work there, and who come and see us and enjoy riding the elevator. And I've never been popular for that, but I was liking, you know, I was liking it that they liked to come and visit. And we can see the work that you all do with those students, the way that they introduce themselves, the way that they take care of our mail, or whatever the task may be. It is really, really the very best thing about our building, is having the student workers there, their job coaches, the store, all of that. So thank you so much for, for that work, and bringing that into, you know, when you're, you go into education, you go into education for children, and then you end up moving to different positions because you want to support people who support children. But sometimes, you don't get to be around children enough, or you forget that you don't get to be, and so it's been wonderful to have students around us, so thank you for that. Mr. Carney, we're gonna miss you. You've certainly served a significant role with your finance background, having small children in the district. You just brought a lot of different perspectives to the table. I've certainly appreciated your, your questions, your authenticity, the wanting to learn and understand, and all of the way that you've approached everything has been really fantastic as a superintendent, so I want to say thank you for your service, for the sacrifice to your family. We all understand that very well, and there's no question that when you had a brand-new baby, I was, I was thinking that was above and beyond, you know, to, your wife deserves a medal for that, but nonetheless, we certainly appreciated everything that you've done for the district, and hope you will continue to serve in some way. And finally, you know, we go into education, we want to teach children how to read and do math, and become everything they want to be in their own lives, and we don't ever really expect to sponsor a slumber party. And last Friday, we had a rain event, and there were parents in parking lots, and it was getting a little deep, and we were a little nervous about a couple of things, and we thought, okay, all right. You know, it was unexpected, we took care of it. But then Tuesday, it was completely unexpected, and the water came up so quickly in the City of UMBLE, and on North Park, and Woodland Hills, and people, I cannot tell you the way that this, this group of leaders, and adults, and bus drivers just absolutely came together and brought their expertise, whether it was bus drivers who were driving through three and four feet of water, whether it was administrators who were setting up movies and snacks and cooking dinner in the cafeteria for way more people than, than they'd ever cooked for before, whether it was Kenny and Nolan and all of them making sure that the buildings were safe. Really, it was an incredible effort. There was one point where Debbie Beard was working with Chief Cook so that Chief could go and rescue two buses of field trip students who couldn't get back to their school, and they were stuck in all this gridlock of traffic, and they'd been there and they needed to use the restroom, and, you know, they're fifth graders. And so Chief goes up there and gets the buses, and he finds a way through to Diane's school at Foster, where she and her team warmly welcome two buses of fifth graders from Woodland Hills Elementary into their school after hours and take care of them. At the same time that Bob is writing down the names of all the students who are still at Kingwood Middle School, and it's a long list, and all the reasons why they're not gonna be able to leave, and talking about how we're gonna get blankets and pillows, and what movies we're gonna watch, and what food we're going to have. And at Elm Grove, you had a lot of little kids whose parents couldn't get to them, and teachers whose own homes were flooding and stayed because they didn't want their kindergarten student to be alone. And they wouldn't have been alone, but they wouldn't have known anyone else the way that they knew them. Parents that they called on the phone and promised that I will stay here until you get here, and that's what our staff did. They were getting sent pictures of their own homes, and their own spouses pulling things out, and they were on the phone with parents saying, don't worry, I'm gonna stay here with your children until you can get here. I don't care what time it was. At Elm Grove and at Kingwood Middle School, it was one in the morning. At Kingwood Park, it was all night. And we had never seen flooding in those areas before. People said, I'm a second-generation homeowner in Elm Grove, I've never seen flooding like this before in my life. Nobody expected it. It wasn't planned. People have their own homes, their own lives, their own things. Nobody could get to them. They got locked off from the rest of the universe. Parents waited hours and hours and hours on to get through North Park or Woodland Hills. I haven't tried to go in the back way, and I got as far as almost Foster, and some man walking down the street with no shoes on said, you're not going anywhere. So I turned around, drove back out, only to find out that Hamblin Road has, had washed out. A good lesson there. We learned a lot of safety lessons. I had Jason Stube, the city manager from UMBLE, we have a really good relationship, calling saying, making sure your kids are not walking through these streets that have water. I have manhole covers that are blowing off. And sure enough, there it was on Isaacs, it was like a fountain out of the manhole cover. I mean, we didn't expect this, and yet every single person pitched in and did what they had to do to keep children safe. And I heard staff members saying, I'm not worried because my children are at this other school, and I know they're safe. I know their principal's there. I know their teacher's there. It was really an incredible feeling to watch that all happen. And I mean, at the same time, it was chaotic, and it was scary, and these people were amazing with all of these students. So we have invited, and there were more, but the Kingwood Park theater was so differently impacted by that rain event than any other part of the district. impacted by that rain event than any other part of the district. And, and don't misunderstand, there were other principals that stayed late, and there were other schools that had students long, long into the evening. But these schools had a whole different set of circumstances. If you saw North Park Drive and pictures of Warren's, it was a river running through there. And like Ms. Conrad said to me, she goes, "There's a big ditch in the middle there. How does that even happen?" You know, we, we don't know. We don't know. But tonight, I would like to recognize, and with the board's support, I would love if we could do a photo here, Principal of Kingwood Park High School and Associate Principal of Kingwood Park High School, Lisa Drabing. Brian Johnson, if you please come forward. Kingwood Middle School Principal, Bob Attaberry. Assistant Principals Jennifer Holloway and James Pascal, please come forward. Bear Branch Principal, Khaki Palmer, who called and said, "My food is padlocked. How do I get to it?" Nolan said, "We will find a way." Please come forward. Elm Grove, yes. Elm Grove Principal, Donna Fife. My favorite part of the conversation we were having that evening is when Donna said, "I want to be open in the morning because some of my community will need me." And they were there almost all night. And she was there, and you probably saw on Twitter, her lunch ladies who were there serving food all night long to students. So Donna Fife and Elm Grove. And Diane Zalinski at Foster Elementary, who warmly welcomed a whole group of fifth graders that were not hers. And her own students. And finally, Debbie Beard, Woodland Hills Elementary School. We weren't sure if Debbie was going to be able to get home that night or, or how it was going to be. She was sending me all these pictures of trees down and this and that, and she was steadfast in making sure all of her students got home. So congratulations. Thank you, Debbie Beard.
That means we've got to get him to contract.
He's on the list?
Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure.
No, no, no.
I know, mine is different, but I think you.
No, we're joking.
We can get behind you.
Yeah, we can get behind you.
There we go.
That works.
That works.
We're used to this.
You know, they would have done it. They did it for no thanks at all, but, you know, I, I just feel like it's really important to say thank you to people. We're very lucky to have the leaders we have here, and there's just not enough celebration. So very, very, very proud of, of what they did for students and families that evening under very difficult circumstances. And I also want to say thanks to Chief. I think he got two hours of sleep that night. I heard he slept through one of our calls. Mike may have a recording. We, we were on the phone at 11:00 PM, then again at 4:00 AM, and just, it was constant because the meteorologists really struggled with the prediction last week. They just couldn't get it right. They said, "The models are all over the place. We just don't know what's going to happen. We can only tell you a few hours in advance." So imagine calls every few hours to figure out what we have to do next. I mean, we were, we were putting sandbags out at one point because they told us, you know, and you may have seen HPD lined up their high-water vehicles in Kingwood because they were telling us 10 to 15 inches of rain. And, and very, very thankful that we did not endure 10 to 15 inches of rain from Thursday to Saturday. But nonetheless, it was, it was an interesting time, and couldn't do it without the entire team. Thank you, Mr. Conrad.
Appreciate you bringing them. Because I know most of us probably wanted to go and thank them in some way, but did not cause more destruction, so.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Now we'll move on to our Board Association of Committees. And Audit Committee is first up, and Audit Committee will be meeting in June, once we reform the committees, or once Ms. Morrison reforms the committees, because they've got a charter that they had to adhere to in July. So that's what their Audit Committee's waiting on. Next on tap, it will be the Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee, and Ms. Morrison, I'm going to yield to you.
We will be reporting in June.
Okay. Anything else, you're good. Building and Planning, Mr. Lon Dixon.
Well, first of all, I would like to say there's so much going on in building and planning. We have many exciting bond projects that are happening, so in an effort to be transparent, if you were to go onto our district website on the main page, there's like a section that says Bond 2018, Keeping Our Promises. You could click on the Bond 2018 updates, and if you were to do that, all, a lot of the projects are there. It talks about, we have current projects and completed projects. If you were to click on one, it will tell you the, the phase that we're in, what the status is on the particular project, who the project managers are, the architect that was awarded it, and so much more information. It is a really good source for any information, people in the community and our staff members, if you want to find information about what's happening. And I would like to thank Jamie and the communications team for setting all of that up. It's perfect. So thank you very much, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad.
Go back to board to break it.
I apologize. We do.
June 11th. Yeah. Go ahead.
The June 11th, yes, the evening... Actually, immediately following. Immediately following the June 11th meeting.
Yeah. So that was your June meeting, just to give the date.
So immediately following the June board meeting, we will meet after it. Sorry? Thank you. Now, let's try that again. We will meet immediately after the June 11th board meeting for superintendent evaluation. So it'll be an extended night. Merry Christmas.
All right.
Make sure you mark on your calendar. It's longer than a few hours.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Now, our Finance Chair, Mr. Sitten.
Yeah, before I get to finance, I just realized I missed somebody a minute ago. We have royalty in the room, Mr. Michael Sullivan, son of Danny and Jerrilyn, graduate of K Park, just graduated from Texas A&amp;M University with a degree in aerospace engineer. He's off the payroll, folks. Mom and dad just got a raise. That's fantastic, and that's my segue into finance. How about that? We will have a budget workshop meeting on May 28th. The lovely state legislature is still going back and forth. It's in, it's in committee now. They're trying to decide what, what's going to make it out, what the final bill's going to look like. So talking with, with Mr. Seal and Mr. Gardner, looking at teacher salaries, looking at different options, looking at what the budget projections are going to look like, and, folks, it's a moving target at this point. Every other day, you see a different run coming out on what we get, what we don't get, what the unfunded mandates are going to look like, what some of the funded mandates are going to look like. And it's still a moving target, but they're working very diligently to give us some, some concrete information that we can go move forward, because we're going to, still going to have to pass a budget. And we're going to have to pass that budget with the information we know. And so I know, talking with Mr. Gardner, I specifically asked him, "Do you have a, an option A, B, and a C as far as salaries are concerned?" And, and he's got those. And I know Mike's team has been working very, very diligently on, are we going to have, are we going to lose a million dollars in one proposal, or are we going to get $10 million in another proposal? So again, it's all over the map at this point, and we're, we're just staying in tune. So while they're in committee, it's been posted who's in that committee on the House side and the Senate side. Representative Cuberty is still chairing the, the House Ed Committee, and he is in that joint committee right now. So if you go in and look at things, send him, send him a note. Let him know that you, you thank him for his efforts, but also make sure he understands how we're being impacted by some of these, some of these amendments. So, so we will see everyone on May 28th. Yes, ma'am?
Two questions. One, what about the promise to make us whole because we did the assessment, the reassessment?
It's, it's still a promise.
But there's not, is that part of that?
There's nothing concrete. There's nothing concrete. So we still have, Mike, what is it that we, that, that is tied up in Tedom on the, on the FEMA side?
That was my other question, was the FEMA. Where are we at on that?
Let's just use numbers and say we're in there.
There is a period. Talking to some...
Buses, value losses, all of those things.
Is that on the Senate side? Do you know?
I believe it's on, I believe it's on... I'm, I'm not sure, but the folks on the inside say it's got legs and it's not...
Okay.
And there's not anything that I would ask for head.
Oh, good. That's great. That's, that's some good news.
Soon as we, soon as we hear something, we'll pass that on.
And any FEMA reimbursement updates?
Well, I, I, I've talked to several people, and I know Mike and his staff have, have been doing the same thing, and no update on that at this point.
There's not any real concrete information. So later, I'll be... I think it's yourself. Questions if I...
So, yeah, so the, the, on the, on the FEMA, the FEMA deal, and Mike correct me if I'm wrong, but, so FEMA, this was the question I had. So FEMA allocates the money. It comes to the state. After that, it goes to Tedom, Texas Department of Emergency Management. And there, they have the liability to make sure that we've done everything the way we were supposed to do it. And the big issue is, so when a local emergency is, is declared, you have, I think it's up to 72 hours to, to start doing things. Then the governor can declare an emergency, and then that can go on for like six months. Well, then FEMA comes in after that. Well, everybody's got different rules. Local rules go out the window in the beginning, and then you have state rules, and none of those roll up to FEMA's rules. So when, when, when Tedom gets our money, and if we haven't gone through the correct bid process, or we haven't dotted the right I or crossed the right T, then they can't sign off on it. So, so Mike and his group have been working with the folks at Tedom on what they need, what they're going to require. We went, if y'all remember, we were going one direction, and then FEMA said, "No, you missed that by a week," and so we got to start off and go a different direction. So it's, it's been kind of painful, been very painful. So, but that's where we're at. So the money, the money's been allocated from FEMA, it's at Tedom, and now we're, Mike and his group are working on how, what I's they need dotted, what T's they need crossed, and what documentation they need to prove that we did everything the way we were supposed to do it in order to get better.
Question. Now, and I, this is a question to you, Mike. In working with the state, okay, are they being forthcoming with the items that we need to take care of?
We need to do more than we can do. So, yes, to make this... Now, the rules, the bigger rules, and that you change just over and over again, just the same changes. As an example, we met nicely, we were talking about the paper approach that we would take. We also developed a 25 million dollar plan to protect people possibly, of which people would play the best, best part of it. The old rules, rearming rules, said that they would pay to create more barriers up to the level of flood. New rules were passed a year ago. They realized that was a foolish position because Houston won't let us do building modifications. So we went in and we did all our application, all of our process, and they said, "So FEMA changed the rule to make it two feet above that." We prepared our documents for them, and came back, and they said, "The rules in place right now said that you can only build to 11." We said, "Well, change the rules." And they said, "Yes, we changed them. We, we changed the rules to your scope, but they have the procedures for how you get to that at this point." I didn't explain that we weren't going to be able to do anything because the city didn't let us build that. And they said, "We understand." So we're trying to buy bosses, bosses, boss, and we'll take on this space, and we will get the, but that's the way those are dealings over and over. I really want to say again, I won't say it's a pleasure working with these people because I would rather not be working with them, but these are not ill-intended people. They were just tied knots by rules that are written by people who have never seen, have never seen one of the six inches of water. But we will get them, and they will kind of add to, to rename, maybe to use political context, not to pad on, but just to break the record, but it will be patient. But the wonderful position we're in because of the stewardship of this world before I got here, the stewardship of this world. So we're able to bring out the students and back to the right while we wait, and this last week, we have options.
All right. That's it, Ms. Sitten?
That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Morrison, African Sea Committee?
Okay, we actually have no report, but I continue to state that you need, just as Mr. Sitten said, we need to continue to reach out to our representatives and our senators because, you know, we need as much as we can get, and it is going to impact us with the things that are going on, so we need every bit of help that we can get.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Carney, the Education Foundation?
Thank you, Mr. President. So on Friday, May 3rd, we have the prize posse for the Education Foundation. So we were able to go around and award over $230,000 in innovative education grants across Umbel ISD. So I had the pleasure of participating in that. It's always a... Really want to say again, I won't say it's a pleasure working with these people because I would rather not be working with them. But these are not ill-intentioned people. They were just had knocks by rules that are written by people who have never seen, have never seen water six inches of water. But we will get there. And they were kind of had to, we may need to use political contacts not to padlock, but just break the territory. But if you're patient, but the wonderful position we're in because of the stewardship of this world before I got here, the stewardship of this world. We're able to bring our students back to the right long way, and this last year will be an option.
All right. That's it, Ms. Sitten? All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Morrison, African C Committee?
Okay. We actually have no report, but I continue to state that you need, just as Mr. Sitten said, we need to continue to reach out to our representatives and our senators. Because, you know, we need as much as we can get, and it is going to impact us with the things that are going on. So we need every bit of help that we can get.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Carney, the Education Foundation?
Thank you, Mr. President. So on Friday, May 3rd, we have the prize posse for the Education Foundation. So we were able to go around and award over $230,000 in innovative education grants across all of ISD. So I had the pleasure of participating in that. It's always a fun time. There were 71 grants in total that impacted 37 campuses. And the foundation is really grateful for the educators that have all these great ideas for our students and really, really happy that we can bring them to life. $230,000 was just the amount awarded on the prize posse day. There was over $1 million in total awarded this year by the Education Foundation across the district. So the year isn't over yet, and there's going to be a full report given to the school board by the Education Foundation in August. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. I wasn't able to go with you guys, but I was there in the morning to help send everybody off on the buses. So it was great to see. Good job. Mr. Ramon Dixon, Kingwood Super Neighbourhood Council?
Nothing to report. The meeting is tomorrow evening.
Okay. All right. Next, we'll go ahead and move into our action item from closed session. Ms. Dixon, I ask if you will help me here.
Okay.
Motion?
Sorry. Ready?
I am ready.
Okay. I move that the board approve the administration's recommendations of student expulsions as presented in closed session.
All right. Motion in second. All in favor? Right hand? Opposed by the same?
I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
All right. Motion in second. All in favor? Okay. 4D?
I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendations presented in closed session in the contract listing dated May 14, 2019, to terminate the probationary contracts of certain employees at the end of the 2018-2019 contract term in the best interest of the district and authorize the superintendent to provide all appropriate notices and take all necessary actions for the same. The probationary contract employees are currently employed at the following campuses: Creekwood Middle School and Ross Sterling Middle School.
All right. Motion in second. Any questions? All in favor? Anxious? Okay. 4D?
I move that the board approve the contract recommendations for employees for the 2019-2020 school year as presented in closed session in the contract listed dated May 14, 2019.
All right. Motion in second. Any questions? Seeing none. All in favor? Right hand? All right. Okay. Now, if you would, Ms. Dixon, continue on with the consent agenda.
Okay.
Ask if you would help me out here also. And we will start with 5A. The approval of the minutes for the regular board session on the meeting held on Tuesday, April 9. That will be a consent. 5B, the approval of minutes for the special board meeting held on Tuesday, April 16, 2019. That also is a consent. 5C, pull that one. 5D, resolution regarding the wages of staff, contract days for district closure. That's approved. E, goods, professional services, and non-construction services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or 25 individually, $25,000 individually. That is a consent. F, 2018-2019 construction and construction-related purchases. That is a consent. G, budget transfer and amendments increases to renovate the BBTC boardroom, repair administration elevator, and professional development. All right. That is a consent. 5H, bond fund transfers and amendments. Consent. I, tax refunds. Consent. J, waiver of PNI, penalty and interest. That's a consent. 5K, architect selection for the 2019-2020 MEP projects for the BBTC and warehouse. Consent. 5L, technology. It's the 10 Delmar MEC and BX Rail nodes. Yeah. Just Unique Digital Technology, Inc. Why, that's long. All right. Where's Dustin at? Thank you. He's over there. All right. That's consent. M, technology.
Just stay cozy.
Yeah. We're just going to move on. Technology. All right. That's consent. All right. Well, N, technology. Extreme switches, micro, integration, programming solutions, Inc. Consent. O, Audiovisual Technology Group, Inc. Boardroom, AB renovations. We're good at that. P, sale of Point 236 acres of real property in Harris County to the Texas Department of Transportation. We'll pull that one. Q, policy revisions. This is the final action on the policy revisions. That's consent. R, board authorization for inter-local agreements. That is consent. S, if you will, Ms. Dixon?
Okay. Mr. President, I move that the board approve the following items by consent. 5A and 5B. And then we'll skip over 5D through 5O. And then 5Q and 5R.
Okay. May I have a second? All right. Any questions? All in favor? Okay. Opposed by the same? Good. So now, let's go back to C. And I'm going to move, and I need a second, if we will. All right. And I'm only pulling that because I'm going to abstain from that one right there. I was not here for that date, so it's an extension. Okay? Same here for, okay, Ms. Conrad also. Okay. So any more questions? All right. All in favor? Motion. All opposed? Two extensions. So we've got a 4, 2, and two extensions there, Karen. Okay.
5P?
5P. Someone pulled that one right there. May I have a motion? Okay, Mr. Sitten. May I have a motion there? Who's the second? Okay, good. Second? All right. It's on you, sir.
All right. I'll pull this because there were some modifications to this.
Nolan, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I forgot to ask you beforehand, but this is a pretty simple thing. Can you kind of explain what the modification on this is?
Absolutely. XDOT is going to start the expansion of 1960. Out to us to purchase, right in front of Oak Forest. Turnley. We agreed, price had that sealed. Out and decided to extend at Turnley. So instead of it starting about halfway in our property, it's going to extend all the way to the end of our property and start out where the shopping center is. I'm going to change just the length.
Is it going to take out any more trees or anything that we're concerned about?
They touched some near the shopping center, but they're not big ones there, and so we can easily replace.
Good.
Okay. Thanks for that information. Any more questions? Seeing none. All in favor? All opposed by the same? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to an action item. And I believe, parliamentarian, if you will, I think you have some language you need to give me.
Do you start, or do I start?
You start. I'll call the item. This item is to canvass the election returns to declare the results of the election for May 4, 2019, of the Board of Trustee election.
Mr. President, I move to table this item until canvas meeting posted for tomorrow, May 15, 2019. It is my understanding that the administration has not yet received the final certified results of the May 4 trustee election from Harris County.
All right. Thank you. Can I get a second for the call? Motion to table? All right. It's been probably motion in second. All in favor? All opposed by the same? Abstain. 5'1". Okay. Next, we've got some information items. Dr. Fagan? Anything that we need to know? Financial service report?
We do those monthly.
We do those monthly. And then the submission for the LAS?
Mm-hmm. So just information if you're interested.
Okay, good. Anybody have any questions? Then please see Dr. Fagan. Consideration for future board topics? Seeing none? We're adjourned.